I'd like to call this meeting to order, the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. Please call the roll. Everyone will sign into your computer. Hey Jake.
His computer's not doing. He said something wrong.
Steam wheel not work? Frank said use that bag.
That work?
Seventeen members present, four absent. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. Would y'all please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Joe.
I remember the Father we come to you tonight with heavy hearts. We come to you to vote because we always meet you in our lives. We need to vote for that in our nation. The United Nations was in trouble on the verge of things that could really be bad. We pray, Lord, that you protect us from these things and may you support the world. Bless your blessing to follow this meeting tonight. What decisions that we made may be accorded you well, that we might use the wisdom and the knowledge that you blessed us to have. We thank you once again for everyone's charity. We pray that everybody will feel welcome and that maybe all the demands will be divided in peace and be safe on the ways to a home. We thank you, Jesus, only name we pray, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have proclamations and courtesy resolutions, a grateful nation project.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have a floor?
It's my honor and privilege to recognize this quarter's fallen hero from Jefferson County. His name was Private First Class Estle Skeen. He was from Danridge. He was killed in World War I while serving on the Hindenburg Line. His great niece Connie is here with us tonight, as well as her husband Craig. Now I would ask them to come forward, please, as well as Janet Norton and Katie Huffaker, please, and Mr. Mayor. If you would like to, the proclamation, let's everybody in.
This is an honorary proclamation for a hometown hero. Whereas Estle Ray Skeen was born on November the 6th, 1895, to parents James and Minty Belle Barbie. Skeen, near the small town of Danridge, nestled along Douglas Lake and the Smoky Mountains. Whereas with war raging in Europe, he registered for the United States Army on May the 29th, 1917, at age 21. He listed farmer as his occupation and described himself as tall and slender. Whereas PFC Skeen was assigned to the US Army's 30th Infantry Division, named the Old Hickory Division in honor of his fellow Tennessee in Andrew "Old" Hickory Jackson. And whereas PFC Skeen and his 120th Regiment, 30th Infantry Division were sent to northern France in the fourth year of World War I, there they engaged in brutal trench warfare against the central powers of Germany, Austria-Hungary, Bulgaria, and the Ottoman Empire. The Allies' powers, Great Britain, France, Russia, Italy, Romania, Canada, Japan, the United States, were at last turning the tide against the German army in France. The Hindenburg Line, near the border of Belgium in north France, was Germany's last zone of defense on the western front. Whereas in the early mornings of September 29th, 1918, near the town of Belcourt, 100 miles northeast of Paris, in northern France's Picardy region, Colonel Sidney Minor was commanding PFC Skeen's 120th Infantry Regiment. Colonel Minor captured the anxious first moments of the bloody assault on the Hindenburg Line. Australian, British, French, and American forces participated in the attack on the line, which began with the marathon bombardment using 1,637 guns along a 10,000-yard-long front. In the last 24 hours, the British artillery fired a record 945,000 shells. After capturing the St. Quentin Canal, with a creeping barrage of fire, 126 shells for each 500 yards of German trench over an eight-hour period, the Allies were able to successfully breach the Hindenburg Line on September 29th, 1918. Whereas PFC Estle Ray Skeen, age 22, was one of the brave soldiers lost on that day. Because he and his fellow soldiers swarming from the trenches, the formidable Hindenburg Line was broken. The war to end all wars would be over within six weeks and Western Europe liberated. PFC Skeen was laid to rest with his fellow soldiers at the American Cemetery in Bonny, France, Lot A, Row 24, Grave 3. Now therefore I mark pause by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jefferson County, Tennessee, and in conjunction with the Jefferson County Commissioners, express our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family and friends of the late Private First Class Estle Ray Skeen. He will always be remembered for the sacrifice he made to Jefferson County and the United States. Thank you so much.
If you want to present that.
I just want to say also thank you to the Commissioners, to the Commissioners for allowing us to do this on a quarterly basis. It means a great deal to our veterans, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thinking that it will be displayed in the locker courtroom. At this time, we want to honor Hugh J. Moser's family, so if you all would come forward. If you want to join us. If y'all will come up here to the... We thank you for coming. Thank you all. Small proclamation, whereas J. Moser, a sixth-generation Jefferson County native, a philanthropist and a friend of ours departed life on May 4th, 2024. Whereas J. Moser's life was founded by his family, community, and his commitment to enhancing the lives of those in the community through his altruistic actions. Whereas J. Moser, founder of Tennessee Valley Resources, worked in successful business ventures where he developed a lot of partnerships. Devoting praise, also became a part of his family, J. Trax. J. was a successful businessman who identified himself as a farmer. A very enterprising woman indeed, many honest gifts without recognition. J. Moser, a man of vision who remained anchored with the values of the past. Many accolades for his service, i.e. the Moser Center for Entrepreneurial Leadership at Carson Newman, Jefferson County Another Year, Tennessee Higher Education Committee by Governor Bill Lee. And whereas J. Moser, a loved, respected farmer, admired by family and friends and the community, he will be sadly missed by Jefferson County. J., a true public servant and the epitome of the volunteer spirit. Now therefore I mark pause by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jefferson County, express sincere thanks and deepest sympathy and condolences to the family and friends of the late J. Moser. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you all. Next, an honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Curtis Blaine Hudson, Sr. We ask Curtis' family, if they would come forward. Thank you all. An honorary resolution to commemorate and honor Curtis Blaine Hudson, Sr. Curtis Hudson was hired in May 23rd, 2017, as the Jefferson County Veteran's Service Officer, and he served until his passing on June 14th, 2024. Curtis served the residents of Jefferson County, Tennessee with dedication, integrity, and uncompromising principle as the Veteran's Service Officer. Curtis Hudson served in the United States Army and completed his tours of duty in Germany and Vietnam. Curtis Hudson not only enjoyed assisting the veterans and their loved ones in Jefferson County, but enjoyed being a part of the community and involved in many activities. He was a member of the Danridge Lines, Kiwanis Clubs, the Jefferson County High School Sideline Club, a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Curtis Hudson served as Commander of the Danridge VFW Post 3380 and State Commander of the Tennessee VFW. Curtis Hudson was not only loved by family and friends, but respected and admired. He is worthy of recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. Now therefore I mark pause by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jefferson County, and in conjunction with the Jefferson County Commissioners, express our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of the late Curtis Hudson.
All right, we'll move right along to approval and corrections of the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Not hearing any? We'll move past consent agenda into the approval of the minutes. You have before you A, B, C, and D minutes. Is there a motion on the floor? Who was the second? Joe? Marcus? Do more? We have nothing to do. Passes 17-0. Next, we have appearance of citizens. First up, we have Linda McSmith. Could you please come to the podium, state your name, address? You have three minutes.
Linda McSmith, 3766 Island View Way, Road, Sevierville. I'm here tonight, just very briefly, I talked to you last week at the workshop, but some people were not at the workshop. So I just want to remind you, number one about the fire departments, these are volunteer positions. People are giving up their time, they need the proper equipment, they need the proper tools. If we cannot continue to fund them, then we need to think about the fact that we're going to lose ISO ratings. ISO ratings are directly linked to homeowners insurance. So not only are you increasing taxes, you're increasing homeowners insurance. And think about the fact that these people serve throughout the county. They're not just specific areas, one or two. The majority of our county are serviced by volunteer fire departments. Secondly, zoning issues. We need to get our act together. We need to have clear and concise guidelines to be followed, not only for the residents, but also for the employees, to make sure that they've got the staffing that they need to be able to assess all the way through the process, revisit. I know last week I heard some chatter about the fact that when there was one thing that was done, nobody went back and checked on that property after the zoning was approved, even though it was not completed. They're also taking a lot of leniency from the property owners as far as them saying they don't have anybody near them or that would be impeded by it, or there's no property owners that are residents touching the property. You need to know more before you approve what these departments are doing. Thirdly, building department. One of the requests in the budget system was for a part-time person for the building department, and that was removed. Think about who brings revenue in. One way is through buildings, through getting the different information, getting permits. We also are very delinquent on imposing anything related to short-term rentals. So you need to think about that. We need to hold accountable both our county employees, the managers, and the commission for the acts that are taken, not just push them through, red stamp them through. Not all employee department heads come at your meetings. Some do, some do regularly, but a lot don't. We should see full participation, and you should be able to ask questions and get answers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have James Fox.
So good evening, Jefferson County Commissioners. My name is James Lance. Is that James? Fox, oh, I apologize.
Wrong guy. You're next, just hang in.
All right. All right, guys, thank you. Now, last week I spoke about the Airbnbs again. I want to rehash that. You know Hampton Inn, and Conneal Lodge, Jefferson Inn, all these. Theirs own C8, they have business licenses, they're inspected, their pools are inspected. If they serve food, their health department's there, their fire inspected, yada, yada, yada. Why is that important? Because they are the original short-term rentals. So the question is, why are we treating short-term rentals differently just because I want to say I'm a short-term rental? I mean, we have rules already in place. We should at least start by getting them to follow those rules. Secondly, the biggest thing I want to bring up, if this is a report from CNN, it's dated July 9th. How Airbnb fails to protect guests from hidden cameras. An Airbnb representative testifying under court deposition, Airbnb has generated tens of thousands of complaints about surveillance devices in the last decade. The company, as a matter of practice, does not notify law enforcement even when a child is involved. These cameras are being seen in the bedrooms, seen in bathrooms, people changing, people taking showers, people having intercourse, naked children, yada, yada, yada. Thirty-five thousand images. It tells users they should not rely on background checks and all criminal convictions of sex offenders for their registrations when they rent one of these. And even if Airbnb discovers a criminal, a user has a criminal background, convictions of murder, terrorism, rape, or child molestation, they are not automatically disqualified under company's policy. Airbnb today has a higher value than hotel, Hyatt Hotels and Marriott combined, and continues to chase the benefits of being an international hotel chain while shorting fewer of the responsibilities. Again, thirty-five thousand complaints. If there is a complaint, they notify the host, which gives the potential criminal person a heads-up before the police find out about it. And again, they do not notify the police department. They would rather not do that. So why are they hiding that? The last thing, as far as regulations and stuff, local municipalities have been left to govern this fast-growing industry. In the cities that have been successful in introducing regulations such as requiring hosts to register with local authorities, it has at times been difficult to get Airbnb to comply with some of those regulations that could help criminal investigations. So, bottom line is, it's a free-for-all at these Airbnbs. Now, the question is, okay, is this a good corporate neighbor? And secondly, do we want this kind of neighbor unregulated?
Thank you, sir. Mr. James Lance, you're up, sir.
My apologies, sir. Apologies to the Commissioners. So good evening again, Jefferson County Commissioners. My name is James Lance, 27-year veteran of US Armed Forces, residing at 2246 Peninsula Drive, Jefferson State, Tennessee. I'm here on behalf of the citizens of Dogwood Acres. As you recall, during the 24 June County Commission meeting, Commissioner Carmichael issued a call for action regarding new sources of county operating revenue. Since that time, I was afforded an opportunity to review the proposed county's fiscal year '24-'25 budget. In a move that appears contrary to fiscal prudence, I noted selected county officials all received 5% pay increases. Now, again, thanks to Mr. Marcus Reed for information received subsequent to preparing for this meeting. I understand that these are unfunded mandates from the state. But you can understand my position as John Q. Citizen. It seems hardly fair that on one hand we're raising property taxes by 5.9% and at the same time you're giving 5% pay increases to these officials. So in summation, my question to the county Commissioners is what has been done to address Commissioner Carmichael's call to action on 24 June regarding identifying new sources of operating revenue for Jefferson County? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kathleen Villers. Next, we have Kathleen Villers.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Villers. I live at twenty-two oh-two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, and I'm here to address the wheel tax. Some thoughts, and first of all, my background. I have extensive audit, financial, and budgeting background throughout my entire career, and folks, I've got some observations. On the wheel tax, previously, wheel tax was eight cents on our two dollars and thirty cent rate, okay? And that was a fairly significant amount. I did a what-if. What if we were to continue that wheel tax going forward? That would result in about a four and a half cent reduction in the nine cents we as property owners just incurred, half, half. And what would that mean? Well, some might say there was a promise, a promise that we were going to remove the wheel tax once we get the debt under control. But when I look through the budget, debt is not the only area a wheel tax could help. It could help certainly to continue with our debt to be paid off by 2040, but it could also help with capital needs. It could help with highway. And right now, the concern I have and what I see is, without new revenue sources or without cost control, folks, I'm very concerned because we have put the entire increase on the property owners through added property taxes. I don't think it's fair, and actually, when you look at it, it's a six point seven percent increase on property owners. So I would ask the commissioners, please, consider the wheel tax. It's a very, very viable source of revenue. And secondly, don't remove it before we've not made some decisions about new revenue sources, and secondly, perhaps some cost control also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Kyle Broswell.
How are we doing tonight? My name's Kyle Broswell. I live at sixteen sixty-one East Highway twenty-five seventy. I'm here to somewhat educate myself here tonight. Is there a zoning enforcement officer in Jefferson County?
Yeah, I am.
You are the zoning enforcement officer. So when a person does not follow their site plan and their zoning thing... Where, where would I speak about it? But they have something to do with not upholding your spot in office? Okay, and we got a, we got a fifteen-year-old boy to tell us that he put up two hundred and eighty feet of fence when he needs forty-four hundred feet of fence. He did it so, I quote, "We will shut up about it." That is what these people think about us here. They're not protecting us, protecting our values, protecting our way of life. They're not doing any of that. They're making us nothing but unsafe in the area that we're in, and that is a hard thing for me to do considering I love and respect this county so much. Our property taxes have almost doubled in the last year. This guy had his property assessed for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. He is now trying to sell it for two point five million dollars. How is that okay in any place? I just don't find that a okay situation. They're lying to us, the site plan. It is clearly way wrong. If I got a nine-year-old to write a site plan, could I get it approved here? Because that's what this guy did. He got an un-engineered plan off the interweb, brought it to you a couple times, and you guys were like, "Yeah, sure." I don't feel like that is an okay scenario or situation for this county. That is just causing nothing but troubles and riffraffs. I live by four campgrounds, and some of the stuff that goes on these campgrounds is just unbearable to me. I did not live here in this beautiful, God's country for people to come in and make me feel unsafe. That is not an okay thing to do, and it is up to you guys to protect us as individuals and rights and taxpayers, and I feel like that is not happening in my area at all. So much infrastructure and business has went up where we live, and nothing is done. I just, I don't feel like this is the right scenario, and that's why I'm here to speak to you, and I will continue to do so until we can get some of these problems resolved. Thank you.
Sir, I'd like to thank you for speaking, but technically, you came to the wrong meeting.
Well, sir, I'm just...
You need to come to the planning commission meeting, and then you will meet the actual planners.
I, I understand that, but are you guys that hold the planning committee to a certain par?
We vote straight up or straight down. The mechanics is always settled with the state because there will be a state person there.
Do you guys have the right to revoke his permit, though, correct?
No. No.
So who has the right to revoke? The planning committee? I'll be here for that one, too, you all. Thank you for everything.
That's what I'm trying to say to you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Michelle Henderson.
All right, so Kyle is my husband. My name is Michelle, and I live at sixteen sixty-one East Highway twenty-five seventy, and I spoke last week about the campground that is near us. It's the property known as Lakeside Getaway on Douglas. We have issues with people trespassing, defecating, urinating, and because the bathrooms next to us at the campground are not open. I'm here again tonight to see what's being done about these regulations. There's been a lot of zoning issues, it seems like lately, and we have become a part of that. One of the biggest zoning issues next door to us is the fire hydrant. I wrote the local water company, I have the email, I've inquired. He should have a fire hydrant. He has asked, they have told him that he can get a line extension. He doesn't have one. We are in the biggest heat wave right now that we have been in since 2016, and all of us know about the fires of 2016, and my home is located in woods, very close to this campground. Sorry, we want to make sure that these regulations are being discussed and handled. One, because like my husband said, this campground is now being put up for sale. When the new owner comes in, do they have to meet these regulations? We don't feel safe with this situation. The current owner started the fence. He hasn't, he has stopped it after two hundred feet. There's still many parts of this campground that are exposed on the sides. We're encouraging the zoning and planning to make sure that this gets finished because there is supposed to be a buffer according to the regulations that there is not. Like the lady stated earlier, we are one of the situations where the guy said, "Hey, nobody lives in the woods near us." Guess what? We're a hundred feet from this guy's bathhouse. So how it is that no one sees our house right next door to this guy's property, I have no idea. So my biggest deal right now is zoning. Why is it the zoning board not handling these situations? What is going on with the zoning regulations in this county? Also, one of the other things that was brought up when this campground was approved was Commissioner Huffaker proposed, proposed a resolution requiring the neighboring properties to at the developer's expense to contact neighboring properties. Why is that not something that is being done? That made sense, and I feel like that was something that should have fallen on someone's ears. Better notification of the surrounding properties would be great, but you at least making people heard would be awesome. Making people appear to the, or adhere to the campground regulations would be really great, too. This is Sherman Oaks. This is a campground that is near us. This is an attachment that is not supposed to be there. This is a garden. This is also the electrical. I don't think AEC or code enforcement approves of this, but this is actually hooked to someone's camper that is permanently an attached structure. So this is why I'm bringing this all, because I don't want this in my backyard. Like I said, this guy's campground is very close to my house, and if this is going on literally a stone's throw away from my house, what can go on in my backyard? So I would like something done about the zoning in this county, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Nelson.
Beth Nelson, four seventy Judson Road, Starbury Plains. I want to kind of address a couple of things that came up at commission work session last week, and one of those being this very campground issue that's continued to plague our county. I sat here tonight thinking, if we weren't talking about zoning, what would we be talking about? Because that's every single meeting, there is something going on with zoning in our This family spoke last week about the impact of the campground on their family, on their kids playing in their backyard, but also an out-of-compliance background, campground out of compliance. They stated several disturbing issues that they are experiencing adjacent to them, and many of those were due to being out of compliance. People are living in their campers, we all know that. But these people that were coming into this campground next to them, were coming in their yards, there's no bathrooms there, all those things. That should not be. That should not be. We have no follow-up when site plans are approved and our zoning development standards for primitive and RV sites needs work. Two, in regional planning meeting last month, the planner discussed the needs for strong zoning. We continually have conflicts, and we have conflicts here in issues. We have lawsuits. I heard you all laugh about the lawsuits. You know how that made me feel as a taxpayer, that we're paying money out of our own property taxes that go into this county to pay for attorneys because we have to defend our zoning that we don't have? That's not right. It's wrong. We have lack of tax dollars due to the fact that we have weak zoning, and we have no follow-up, and not only weak zoning, but we have no compliance. I want to quote you what our planning consultant said, and this is her quote. She said, "To be proactive. Drive your own bus. Look forward and manage. Define it. Define your zoning. Good zoning protects both residents and business growth." We fuss about businesses not coming into our county. They're not coming. She actually said the words "they run." They want to be protected. I'm going to say that again. Be proactive. Drive your own bus. Look forward and manage it. Define your zoning. Good zoning protects residents and businesses and their growth. Businesses don't want to come to areas where they are not protected. They make huge investments, they make huge investments, and they also want to know what's going to be around them. She also said, quote, "They want a sure thing." The campground resolution that Commissioner Huffaker tried to get passed last year did not pass, much due to the fact that it was under a special use permit and had to go before the BZA. It also didn't pass because value-added processing was added to it and had absolutely nothing to do with a campground. We have a highly competent, a highly competent planning consultant now assigned to our county. I'm asking someone on this commission to address the campground issues, which could continue to grow. I'm asking you to ask the planning consultant to create another resolution specifically for campgrounds, primitive, and RV parks, and with the goal of regional planning, sending back her recommendations for approval here by commission, and stop this nonsense and protect the taxpayers of this county. Second, I'm also asking for zoning code enforcement. It appears the county tax has revenue that's not being collected. The Airbnb is one, one thing, let alone people living in their campers. You know who bears the burden of that? You do, and I do, when other people are not paying the appropriate taxes in this county. If they don't pay them, then we're the ones bearing that tax. I ask for you to put good developmental standards around zoning, stop the lawsuit filing, which could be addressed with a good zoning enforcement and good codes enforcement. Why do we continue to repeat over and over these battles, which ultimately affect our taxpaying citizens and the county and our county budget? Our county deserves protecting. The citizens deserve protecting, and our businesses deserve protecting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes appearance of citizens. Did anybody wish to speak that didn't get to speak? We'll move right along to approval of notaries and bonds. We have two names to add. David Taylor and Kristy Thomas. Add that to your list. That is on the floor this time. Seventeen yes, zero no, passes. Next, we have nominating committee. By understanding that Heidi Thomas is not here this evening, and Randy Bales will be sitting in for her, but they didn't have a forum, so Mr. Randy, you have the floor.
As you said, we didn't have a forum. A forum last week, and we've got the names that were suggested to us that you have in front of you, so we didn't have a forum, we've got to tend to us to vote anyway as pool commissioners, so pretty much turn that back over to you.
All right. Animal control oversight, Commissioner Austin Brooks was nominated. Is there a motion? We have a motion for Katie Huffaker, seconded by Sammy Solomon. Question or comment before we vote? Not hearing any? Next, we have the budget committee. You have, you have the list before you, Janet Norton, Joe Coleman, Austin Brooks, Greg Burton, Tim Seals, Rob Levens, John Neil Scarlett, Ronnie Coleman, Jimmy Carmichael, and Heidi Thomas. Is motion on the floor? You surely can. I will go ahead and read the nominating committee. If you wish to vote on them all together, is there an objection? Not hearing an objection. Nominating committee, Janet Norton, Jimmy Dale Patterson, Jim Snarkers, John Johnson, Sammy Solomon, Ranson Douglas, Randy Bales, Terry Dockery, A.J. Walker, and Marcus Reed. Motion on the floor? I'm sorry?
It's correct on the, on the paper.
Oh, it's, it's correct on yours, Marcus on mine, okay. I got you. Thank you for the correction. We'll do the switch over here, and we have a motion on the floor for Katie Huffaker, seconded by Austin Brooks.
Were you thinking the building inspector and all that with this motion?
Yes, yes, I'll go ahead and read it. I ain't got that far yet. The Building Inspection Board of Appeals, licensed building contractor, renominated Kenny Carr, certified home inspector Steve Motruck, and citizen Mike Dockery. That will conclude all the names on my list, as everybody's list reads the same. We will vote on all of them together. Passes seventeen to zero. Moving right along to reports of elected officials. County Mayor Mark Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayoral appointments haven't changed since, since the work session. We can take them all as a whole or do them individually, but nursing home board would be Commissioner Tim Seals, reappointed, Susan Moser to the Jefferson Healthcare Foundation Board, urban growth boundary would be Clint Hodge to fill out the continued term of Jay Moser. That would also put him on the Joint Economic Community Development Board to continue that term, and the nine-one-one board would be Chad Ballinger to replace Dean Ballinger, who just recently passed away. I submit those to you, Mr. Chairman, you can...
You want to take all these together, commission? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Is that all?
That's all the appointments, yes, sorry.
Any question or comment before we vote? Not hearing any, real quick? Seventeen to zero, passes.
So grants update, if you weren't here at the work session, we did receive, don't, don't hold me to the dollar, but I think seven hundred and fifty-six thousand on the home grant. Whatever. grant, whatever the grant is, what it is, I'm, I'm more big number than the little, but seven hundred fifty thousand, that range for the rebuild grant. Some of you have already reached out, which is good, and we need to get that word out. It's, there's no such thing as, there's not anything as free money, but it, but we're not spending money. It's a grant for seven hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred percent, no match, being administered by TCAC. White Pine also got whatever the balance of it that would make it a million. It had been coming through us, but some of the, either way it comes into the county, so don't have a problem with that. So, we'll have opportunity, so folks in the White Pine area that, that they'll be covering, they can use that and that will help us to spread hours out more in the county. It's a great program. Any home they go into, they got to build it to code. And if they can't build it to code, they will replace the home. You've got to be homeowner, they put a lien on it for five years. The homeowner doesn't make payments on that lien. Every year, twenty percent falls off. In five years, they owe nothing. It's, the lien is taken off. Reason that's done, you don't want to go in, spend a hundred thousand dollars on a home and then them sell it to next week and then you don't collect your money. So, this is common sense thing. So, we really need help getting that word out. There'll be a presentation in August sometime, I'll send you an invitation and we will have the information to apply. It's not a quick process. People think that the check's going to come in September, it's not. There's environmental, it's HUD, takes a while, but if they'll persevere, they can get a new home. And that's, that's a good thing for Jefferson County. So, I found it interesting that y'all gave me leadway into Airbnb tonight. Just had a recent meeting with Mark Ezel with the State Tourism Department. I sent you by email, did you get it, John Neil? Your emails? Anyway, well, I sent an email that detailed all the, it was the PowerPoint that he presented and he was dealing with tourism and Airbnb, the impact on the state and how much the state invests and all that. It's a really good document to look at. So, here's what I came away with, because y'all had asked me some time ago about revenue streams and Airbnb. And it's, it's a Chinese puzzle. And I found out, I thought, well, surely somebody's got the answer on this, you know, somebody's worked it out. So, I stood and listened to the Commissioner of Tourism for the State of Tennessee, the king's man, and he goes, "Now, the state revenue department collects here, here and here and it shows on your PowerPoint that I gave you, but like booking.com, Airbnb, whatever they use." Said there was three revenue streams, or maybe more, that the revenue depends upon the operator of the Airbnb to report the taxes and what they do. I think Mr. Hernan could tell you, we're, we're not getting that on some of them that's self-reporting. Some are, some are not, but that's a revenue stream that we need to tap into. So, you know, just, just being who I am, I asked the Commissioner of Tourism, I said, "Well, how does the state collect?" Because he was telling us how much money we were losing and I said, "Well, don't you get state taxes as well? Aren't we losing the state?" And he said, "Mayor, we haven't figured that out yet." And I'm like, "You're the state of Tennessee." So, I, we got to stay active, we got to figure out a solution. I'm telling you, from top down, they can't tell you. And I, so I asked him this, he said, "Well, County Commission can pass a resolution." Well, I understand that. I said, "So, how do we collect?" He said, "I don't know." I said, "Wouldn't you have to have some type of codes enforcement or your zoning officer or somebody?" And he said, "That's one way," but he said, "It's really hard to collect." So, I'm, I'm just telling you what I found out. This is just an FYI to you, where we're at and what we're up against. And I'm, I'm really glad to hear other people speaking about it. It's a revenue stream that we are losing right here. So, Frank does a good job on what he knows about, but there's stuff he don't, so.
Just to clarify, 2020, the state passed legislation, as far as, maybe I'm not following what you're saying we're losing, but as far as occupancy tax, if that is paid through Airbnb, VRBO, booking.com, HomeAway, if it is an online marketplace, then those marketplaces automatically collect the occupancy tax and remit that monthly to our office. I remit it to Mr., well, I remit it to the trustee, but it's tracked. The occupancy tax is coming in through overnight rentals. If they are renting through an Airbnb, HomeAway, some type of online marketplace, the part of this legislation that I don't like and I haven't liked for the last four years, Airbnb will not disclose who it's coming from and how much, how much is coming from this person, how much is coming from that person. They're not telling us that. And they won't tell us that and the state won't make them tell us that. So, but the state signed the contract to get them to pay it all to the Treasury, then Treasury sends us our part. But we are getting that occupancy tax. Jefferson County is getting that four percent occupancy tax from the online marketplace. The ones we may be missing are the ones that are self-reporters who maybe, you know, I'm sorry, but not everybody's an honest business person, not everybody's an honest citizen. If they're renting out because somebody's just calling them and they're saying, "Yeah, you can come stay in my place for a week," and they're renting it out and they're getting cash money, they don't have a business license, they don't have a occupancy tax account, it's their responsibility to remit that over to us.
So, Frank, the Commissioner on Tourism said the Department of Revenue, Treasury looks at like three sources and they rely on booking.com for the person that's renting the self-report. So, he, he was pretty adamant that those, that's not happening. So, you know, the state wouldn't ever be confused in the right hand not know what the left hand's doing. We'd never run up against that. But he, he, I want you to look at that PowerPoint, because he was saying, "This is a revenue stream we're missing out on." And I'm like, I need to talk to Frank, but if we're, he, he said self-reporting is where we're getting and he said that booking, the ones you're talking about, booking.com, they rely on the person to report it. And he said that Treasury doesn't, so he's Commissioner, so, you know, I don't know. But where did you look into?
When I go in to do a test on Airbnb, it automatically charges me. Now, if Airbnb's not sending it all to the state, that's on Airbnb or VRBO, I'm not, I'm just using them as an example. But when I go in to do a test on a property, it automatically figures that occupancy tax and is counted as part of the tax.
Yeah. If we're losing that out, we need to get it. If we're getting it, that's good. Think of some, some areas, he was pretty, he, he had a percentage that, did I send you that PowerPoint, Frank? I've sent it to you and if anybody needs, I've got some hard, you can go on tourism website and probably find it. It's from Mark Ezel, Commissioner of Tourism, but we'll be happy to, to make some copies and give them out.
Question is, is this something for the Public Service Committee to look into or what would we do to move forward?
Well, I think we need to let Frank look at this information and see if what they were presenting is correct or incorrect. And, you know, I, I point out to him, I said, "Well, if we're losing this revenue, isn't the state losing revenue? What are y'all going to do?" And he's just like, I'm like, so anyway. One other thing, I want you to make sure that you let, ask Mr. Joe Gibson to tell you about the big news he did for Jefferson Alliance, about jobs that's coming into Jefferson County this week.
Is Mr. Joe with us?
I am, yes, sir.
Come on up, let's talk.
While he's making his way up, I will say to Commissioners, if you have someone approach you in your district and they say that somebody's renting something out, they're doing it on the side, they're not going through Airbnb, I have had people reach out to my office confidentially and I can follow up on that to make sure that person has the business license or obtains one, so they're not breaking the law by operating a business without a license and then get them on the occupancy tax roll at that time. More than happy for a citizen or a Commissioner to reach out to me and I'll, if, because the hint sometimes are easy way to, to get that, but I can't see everybody renting everywhere overnight. Thank you, sir.
Sir, you now have the floor.
All right. I am Joe Gibson, Director of the Jefferson Alliance, Economic Director, Jefferson County. We do industry and retail recruitment for the county, so I want to quickly as I can read you a press release from the State of Tennessee and Governor Lee. Tennessee Governor Bill Lee, Department of Economic and Community Development Commissioner, Sturipsy McWhorter and Steel Warehouse officials announced today the company's plan to expand in Jefferson City, locating in the retrofitting, by retrofitting the former Footwire Industries of Tennessee building, which is over in the, up on Municipal Drive behind Matsuo in Jefferson City. The project plans to create more than seventy new jobs with an investment of nearly twenty million dollars in innovative equipment, which will support their strategic partners in the construction equipment, agricultural, lawn and garden, truck and trailer industries in addition to helping attract additional investors in the area. Steel Warehouse actually has a, a contract with JLG. I think everyone probably knows Oshkosh lost their defense contract and that's phasing out. JLG, Oshkosh will be changing the, the name to JLG, the first of twenty-five, and they'll be running six different SkyTrak pieces of equipment through their, their deal and they also are right now constructing a, a large paint facility for the Pierce fire, fire truck caps. So, they needed, Steel Warehouse needed a facility close to JLG to support the, the parts that they'll be making for them, but they will also be able to support other industries in the, within the region. Steel Warehouse, a leading steel service center, has been operating since nineteen forty-seven when founder Nathan Lierman opened production in South Bend, Indiana. Since its founding, the company has expanded to fifteen locations across the United States, Mexico and Brazil, distributing over two million tons of coil, steel and plate annually and hot and cold rolled materials. Steel Warehouse caters to a diverse range of industries including aerospace, agricultural, automotive, construction, energy and transportation. Steel Warehouse invests in its employees, offering focused job training, upskilling and opportunities for advancement. This expansion will give Steel Warehouse its third location in the volunteer state in addition to its existing operations in Chattanooga and Memphis. Quote from Governor Lee, "I think Steel Warehouse for its investment in Tennessee and excited to see the number of skilled tradesmen, tradeswomen that will benefit from the company's expansion in Jefferson City. Look forward to seeing the prosperity that follows today's announcement and I'm ready to support Steel Warehouse in further developing and dedicating workforce across the, this region." So, the building they're in, they'll probably triple that building as they move forward and continue to create additional jobs and be a, a good partner to Jefferson County. So, just wanted to make that announcement and also take the opportunity to thank County Commission for supporting Jefferson Alliance. We, we have a dedicated board that want to see Jefferson County grow in the right way and they've been very supportive of me and just thank you all for your, your support. And I've, I've visited with a few Commissioners, open at any time, if within your areas there's a piece of property you have a suggestion for specific development for it or any kind of suggestions at all, we're open at any time to take your input to help grow Jefferson County in the right way. So, thank you very much.
Question or comment from Mr. Joe? Not hearing any, we'll move right along. Chairman's comments, I was asked just a simple thing to read into the record that to start next year's budget, we're a little over one point five million dollars behind. So, that's not a good number to start out with when we've not got into everything else. But moving right along, we'll move along to, we have a letter of resignation from Mr. Joe Patterson, that he can't hold two offices at the same time, so we will have to approve We have a motion on the floor, properly seconded, question or comment? Do what? Oh, okay. I didn't see you do that.
No, he didn't. No, he did not vote.
He did not vote, right?
I don't want that on me, sorry.
No, get to that. Sixteen yes, zero no, and it passes, we accept. Next, we move down to Department of Education, Dr. Tommy Arnold. Do you want to stop for your open house here, sir?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to just update the Commission that we have completed the renovation at Piedmont Elementary School and on August fifth, we're having an open house from four to five. Love to have you all down there to, to view that renovation of that school. If you all are available, please, you're welcome and come on down. Thank you.
Question or comment from Mr. Tommy? Not hearing any, thank you, sir. Next, we have Library Board appointments, hand down. I think this is straight up approved, I do believe. Bear with us for just a second here. You don't have it? Well, I don't have a name either, I just, it shows on my list of the board appointment.
It's an email from the Library Board.
Susan Underwood.
We'll, we'll go back, I got you. I'm sorry?
Susan Underwood's the name.
Susan Underwood?
And that's for Jefferson Library Board Representative, continued term of Patricia Eisenberg. That comes from the Library Board.
The name is Susan Underwood? We shall proceed to vote when we come back up. Next on the agenda, let's see, we got two more to vote here. Mr. Bird and Mr. John. Seventeen yes and zero no, pass. We got to hit reverse because I missed the finest part, Ms. Jessica.
So, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions on the May financials that you may have. If not, I'm going to go ahead, since we're speaking on the occupancy tax, just wanted to speak on behalf of the hotel motel tax and where we stand as of the end of May. We have brought in over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we budgeted as of the end of May. If we stay on track and how we book it in our department, we're two months behind, so we will, will post June, July and August and it'll be a receivable for this year. So, we have three more months of revenue to post towards that. If we stay on track, we could potentially go four to five hundred thousand dollars above our budget for hotel motel tax. potentially go $400,000 to $500,000 above our budget for hotel motel tax for fiscal year 2324. Now, that does not mean we can balance our budget with those additional funds. Those are strictly for tourism and economic development. They go into a reserve on the balance sheet. That's how we support our tourism department. That's how we support the Jefferson Alliance. That's where those funds come from. But that reserve currently has a little shy of a million dollars already. So the funds that we receive above and beyond the budget this fiscal year will be added to those reserves. So I just wanted to speak on that, since everybody else has been talking about it tonight. Thought I might get in the fund, financial information about it, that we are receiving some revenue from somebody somewhere. So we appreciate Mr. Frank Herndon for recording that for us, because we like to record it in our office as well. Last week, I did speak a little bit on behalf of our standard and poor bond rating increasing. I didn't know if anyone had a chance to read through that, if anyone had any questions on that, or how that'll affect our county. We did increase from A+ to AA, I'm going to say minus, because negatives, has a negative connotary to it. So A+ to AA-, which is an upgrade on standard and poor rating. So that will help our bond rating if we go for any type of debt in the future. We're more appealing that way. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Jesse, do you know how that affects, what's the numerical value of that effect?
For the standard and bond, or the standard and poor bond rating? Numerical, I do not, not until we go for more debt, and then we'll see the, the low interest rates hopefully, and they'll snatch us up for the debt, since we'll be more appealing, since we have a great bond rating. But I do want to thank you all, because you all are the ones that approve the fiscal conservative budget that we have, and that really did help. Our reserves, our fund balance, our fiscal responsible budgeting habits that we have each year, the mayor sold us on the economic development and everything. So I do want to applause him for that. He's very good at selling our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. And now, we'll move to old business. There is none. We should have. My paper didn't say vote, so.
I've got a few.
Let's go ahead and do it right now.
All right. Budget amendment, General Fund 101 Amendment 1. There's several reserves coming in this thing. There's several grants. You have 10 items. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Should we take them together, or do you want to take them singular?
Let's take them singular, because we've got a...
All 10 of these, we'll take together. All right, General Fund 101 Amendment 2. You have the items before you. I don't
know if it got on the sheets, but for number three, this is where we replace the funds for the American Disability Act, the ADA, $548,555.82. This was used in the budget cycle, so it should show at the top as a reserve coming out in that thing, or increase in reserve. So if it did not get printed on your sheet, please make that addition in correction. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? I'm hearing. Proceed to vote. Seventeen zero, sir.
All right, the last one I have is Capital Fund 171 Amendment 1. This is transfers for CARES Grant, and budgeting some funds for Finance Department ADA upgrades master ADA plan. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seventeen zero, second please.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, based on what you said in your comments, just in the spirit of transparency, 1.57, just so everybody knows, is a short seven cents on your property tax. That's where it stands.
Like, sir?
We're in the hole for next year's budget. Seven cents, a short seven cents, based on what he said. Well, it's 240 something, and we booked, we only booked 95% of it. So based on that, you're a short seven cents on 1.57 million, that we are in the hole.
All right, moving right along to new business, Resolution 2024-22, Resolution EMS to surplus and auction of equipment. Just for you. Seventeen zero, pass. Next resolution, 2024-21, resolution requesting all Jefferson County 911 telecommunicators be elevated to the status of first responders. Pass seventeen zero. The last is just an announcement, notice of balloon festival request for wine garden permit, Appalachian Robin McManan, for information only. Announcements, they are none. We are ready to adjourn, but we have a beer board. I'm sorry, hold up.
The mayor shared with me, if I, if I can...
Sure, go right ahead.
Mayor shared with me the PowerPoint, and just so, so everybody's understanding the same thing on this. One thing they were talking about was property management softwares, or property management groups. There are companies that, you know, if I own a short-term rental, I can turn it over to this company to handle all the rentals for me. We do have several of those who remit occupancy tax to Jefferson County. It's not an online database, but, but it's similar. They may do it online through their own booking software, but it is similar. The other they're talking about is the phone and offline direct bookings, just someone having personal knowledge that, hey, so-and-so rents a cabin on Douglas Lake, I'm going to call them up. They tell a friend, they tell a friend. It's not really advertised or anything like that. And then the PowerPoint says booking.com is 20% of all short-term rentals. I'm not very familiar with booking.com, but I thought that was something that kind of went through hotels. This PowerPoint says they don't collect taxes like the Airbnb does. And then the fourth category was limited visibility with that, just a non, non-reporting people. But occupancy tax always is, always has been, a self-reporting tax, even for, and it's a tax paid by those who are occupying the facility. It's not a tax by the owner. It's whoever's traveling through, and they pay that 4%, is what Jefferson County's rate is. You go up here and stay at a hotel at the interstate, you pay it. They charge you, you pay it, and then it's their responsibility, to be honest, and tell, report to my office how much they collected, and turn all that over to my office. Now, I do audit those facilities. I do audit the hotels on occasion, but it's all between hotels, cabins, everything. It's all self-reporting. I spent many nights trying to find houses on Airbnb, and before they passed this legislation in 2020, and sending out letters, hey, I see you on Airbnb, you've got a rental. And then when they passed that legislation, they took that away from me. I mean, the ability to search that and do that, because they're collecting it all. But then I can't tell who's got a business license, who's doing anything. So it really crippled the county clerks across the state in that enforcement, because they're not giving us that information. But we are getting occupancy tax from Airbnb. On the upside of that, it did increase the occupancy tax as soon as that went into effect in 2020, because there are so many outliers out there, people who were not being honest, who were not remitting what they wanted to, or who we just couldn't find. You know, I would send somebody a letter and say, I see you've got an occup, a short-term rental. And they would reply back, I don't have a short-term rental. Oh, my son put that up there three or four years ago, and we've just never done anything with it. But it's still up there. So, you know, but that's the enforcement side of it that's very hard and very time-consuming. But when they, when the state went to collecting it automatically through Airbnb, VRBO, our revenue did increase. So they were capturing some that we were not. But we do constantly look and try to find, and try to do, and try to collect from those who are not paying, and those who are not paying in timely fashion. But like I said, any, any help you can give us as, as neighbors and commissioners, citizens, we'd be glad to take, and we'll run with it.
Question or comment from Mr. Frank? Mr. Frank's done?
I'm done. I just want to tell, Mr. Kipden, thank you. It's your last meeting here as the director, right? Thank you for all the years of your service to us, and thank you from the sixth district for all the phone calls I made to you, everyone else, thank you for always being there, and being with your guys, okay? Thank you so much.
I want to make a motion that we have a $25 wheel tax, with the funds going to the debt service to be used as needed, with the sunshine date of January, of July 31st, 2030.
We have a motion on the floor.
I see it.
We have a second. It is open for a conversation at this moment. Mr. Ronnie, you're saying that you want to have a $25 wheel tax with a sunset date of 2030?
Yes, July 31st, 2030.
We'll have to, we'll have to. That's what I was just getting to. That's why I wanted to make sure I had it right.
Okay.
Is there a motion to suspend the rule?
I'll make a motion second.
We have a motion, a term sale seconded by Sam Solomon, to suspend the rule. Does anyone oppose? Not hearing opposition? We will vote on the suspension of the rule.
On the suspension of the rule.
It's, it's suspension of rules.
Just got it changed.
Yes.
Would you like the boys vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, if the vote gets.
Yes, the vote gets.
Yes, yes.
All right, we got you.
We have seventeen yes, zero no's. Now, we're open to discussion.
Can Ronnie repeat his motion?
Do I need to repeat her motion?
Yes, please.
You, you can. He's, he's in the middle of typing it right now.
Okay, okay.
He's got to make the motion, got his second.
Yeah, well, we, we've done got that, but we got to just back up. Where does he stand? Okay, who was the second on the motion itself? Joe Coleman, I believe? That's what I wrote down anyway. Ronnie Coleman made the motion, Joe Coleman second. We have a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded, and now the discussion starts. Ms. Chance, don't worry. Katie Huffaker, you just hit your button. She had her hand up first.
I just had a quick question. Previously, when we had motions made, or resolutions come in about wheel tax, it said specifically where it was going. Do we need to have specifics in this thing, where it goes, or just that we're having one?
My understanding is you're wanting to put it in a sinking fund, which is the debt service.
Yes, to be used wherever it's needed.
To be used wherever it's needed.
Yes.
That's...
I don't know if we can do that. I mean, I'd love to do that, but I don't know that we can do that.
We can do that, and if you put it in the debt service, it's in the debt service. I don't even got to have a debt for it to spend.
We got that.
We got debt.
Good lord.
I understand.
Is that not as, as, I mean, you say it has to be as where needed. I mean, if we got a debt, well, then that's where it's going, right? So...
I think we can move it to a different fund.
This is why I vote no.
If you want to move it where it can be.
Because nobody can clear it up.
As far as that, if that's where you all want this, I'm, I'm not debating that. What I'm saying is, when you put it in there, you can't use it for operational or any, or capital purchases or anything like that.
Okay.
It specifically goes to the debt service, and it stays there.
Yes.
Is that what you want to do?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, then that's fine.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Katie Huffaker.
Okay, I can amend too, so I don't know if I can just speak again, but I want to amend is to add $12 to the roof department, and also that it's debt service or capital, based on what definition of roof is on, at the time.
Okay, you're wanting to amend the motion that's on the floor to add $5 to the highway department.
Thirty total, 25 his.
And five.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to your motion?
Sure.
We got a...
Well, no, for his, for 25, debt service or capital, but it would be dependent on what county's definition of this, whether it's...
Let me ask you a question.
Are you being careful?
We wanted for capital purchases, capital, infrastructure, what, what do you look at?
Okay, I want to ask the budget chair, which would benefit the county most as far as working, where they can include something other than just debt service.
If you include capital purchases and infrastructure in that, then you can move that to either way.
I want to ask, would that be in our best interest to work, to the other thing, instead of just debt service?
That would allow flexibility, and this board would decide each year where those funds would go during budget. So, for example, the capital purchases, the EMS vehicle, or the ambulances that we purchase each year, they're around $500,000. That's something that needs to be moved over to our capital. they're around $500,000. That's something that needs to be moved over to our capital funds. That's something we could use those funds for. The sheriff's vehicles, I, I don't know, we buy random vehicles. We just bought one for the litter grant, things like that. There's so many options if you do put that verbiage in. But this board would have that decision through the budget cycle each year as to where those funds would be going.
Okay, before we vote to amend, Mr. Coleman, both of you, would you be willing to accept Katie Huffaker's amendment into the original motion?
I would.
And then one out, so we'll vote on the amendment. Sure, you get to finish before we vote.
Are you comfortable with changing the wording of the $25 as the other, like, like the capital purchases? Can you repeat that again, or where it should go?
Well, if you're going, if you're going to word it, then I would word it with, for debt service, capital purchases, or infrastructure. And that the commission would decide allocation of funds for each budget cycle. In other words, if the debt service needed a half million, you may want to put a half million there, and you might want to put half million towards capital purchases, and you might want to put 200,000 for infrastructure. Got to bridge out what I mean.
This would still be decided every year.
It would be decided every year.
It's not an alibi.
But it, it wouldn't lock it, and it would, you could do multiple things with it when you decide that.
So can that go in with 25 within the five for roads?
Yes, yes, that's how we got it wrote, I believe. Yes, if the amendment passes, it'll change. If not, we go back to the original. Okay, next, we got to speak Austin Brooks.
So the amendment as stated is $5 to highway and 25 to debt service and capital purchases or infrastructure.
Right. Okay, see, he has to speak.
No, no, your amendment is only dealing with the $5 now that Mr. Ronnie and that Joe have accepted.
They have accepted it, so you're only dealing with the $5.
So that's verbiage in your original motion.
See, the first time I asked, they said no, and then you decided to go get it. I was going to get it.
He didn't accept it.
That's why I was going to say.
They accepted the verbiage about debt service.
And capital.
Capital infrastructure into the original motion. So your amendment only is dealing with $5.
The $5 to the highway department.
Question from Miss O'Fay. Your $5 to the highway department, are you designating it for capital payment? Something, are you saying it can go into operating? What, what are you doing?
I would recommend capital. That way it's not just going into salaries or whatever.
All right, so you need that in here a minute.
The amendment is voting to put $5 into highway capital. I'm sorry. Yes. We'll go ahead and vote. We'll go ahead and vote on the amendment, clear it up. You have 11 yes, so the amendment passes. You have six no's. Okay. As amended, and Austin Brooks, you get to speak.
Would you please read back the now amended motion to me, sir?
$25 to debt service for, or $25 for debt service, capital purchases, or infrastructure with an added $5 to highway capital with a sunset of July 1st, 2030. Before we vote, I would need a start time.
And you need 90 days.
I need it. The state needs at least 90 days.
And would you, would you all, for cleaner thing, rather than July 1st, make it June 30th of the end with the budget?
Hold up, Mr. Brooks, still got the floor. Does June 30th work? It could. No, it automatically has to.
Need to use microphones?
Yeah, we do. Every, every single day. We're going to do things like this and spend money.
Mr. Brooks, you still got the floor.
This just seems inappropriate to do. It wasn't advertised. Citizens aren't here to speak on it. And it doesn't even sound like we know what we're voting on. I've heard about four different explanations of it. I yield the floor.
Mr. Greg Bird?
Well, I didn't get a chance to speak before we did the motion and then you also started. And it basically says I wanted to, because I was confused what we were voting on. I thought we were staying with going back to the 25 and still raising it to 30. Originally, I, I, I just, that's the reason why I voted no, because I have no idea what we just talked about doing. It's, it's so.
Okay.
Rigmarole. I mean, were we doing the 25, which, are we doing 30? I mean, what we going to do the fi, last time we had a meeting, we talked about doing a wheel tax and doing five for that and five for the roads, which I was wanting to try to bring out, but I never did get a chance to speak, so. That's the reason why I said I voted no on it for the last one, because.
What we are voting on is Mr. Ronnie Coleman and Joe Coleman made the motion and seconded for a $25 wheel tax to go to debt service. Ms. Katie Huffaker made the motion to amend to put $5 to highway fund. Okay, then, before we voted on it, Ronnie Coleman and Joe Coleman decided that they would accept the verbiage of doing the debt service and capital projects and infrastructure. So the only thing that the amendment, when you voted for the amendment, all you done was voted to give the highway department the $5 to put into their capital. So it couldn't be spent on payroll. So to simplify, that's exactly what just happened.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, I feel like it got run through without anybody getting a chance to really.
Well, it, it got changed twice. Hold on, Marcus Schrute's got the floor, and then I'll put you back in.
I'd like to ask this question. How does this affect our property tax? We're 1.5 million already in the hole for next fiscal year, for this year coming up. So how is this going to help our property tax? Is it?
Well, that.
That would be entirely up to you, as you all have heard me say, especially on the budget committee. There are different components. Right now, in our debt service, there is one wheel tax for $25. There is a sales tax component. There is adequate facility tax. Uh, there is property tax. Am I missing one, Ms. Jessie? I think I'm missing one. But anyway, there are multiple components. If you have enough money going in, Mr. Ronnie says, hey, we need this wheel tax, he puts that in the pot. The property tax that's in there, that's equal to that wheel tax, because that wheel tax keeps you at a level where you can pay the debt and the bond payment. That property tax can be moved out into the operational budget, thereby lowering the tax. Had we done it this year, we would have lowered from one, what did we end up at, Ms. Jessie?
$1.43.
We would have ended up coming in there and reducing that amount by 1.25. So that would be up to the commission with what they do in the budget process that year.
So where would be the correct time to take what that, the last $25 wheel tax and brought in 1.2 million, roughly 1.2 million dollars?
1.25.
So how much of that would be equal to a penny on taxes for property tax?
200 and.
About five cents.
About five cents.
So where would we want to say that we would like, if we approve this wheel tax, that we would like to see that five pennies come out of debt service and go into general fund 101 where we need help at in order to help with the county budget? Is this the time to do that?
No, it's during your budget process that you decide that.
Right.
That you bring it out. You look at when Ms. Jessie comes to us.
Well, that, that's a problem I have, because that was not clarified last year. But I want to ensure that we're sitting here in front of the public and we're talking about pulling five pennies out of the debt service fund and moving it to general fund 101. I want to ensure that that happens next fiscal year, or I cannot support doing this.
That is, like I say, that is totally up to this commission as to how you handle it. You may want to only pull four pennies out, or three pennies. Or you may want to pull five pennies out. If you have, it will be determined when Ms. Jessie says, hey, we've got, here's what it costs for us to pay this. We, we have to pay X number of dollars for our bond payment.
I, I.
So this revenue goes in.
I understand that. But what I am saying is I'm the, look at what it says. We just said we're going to take and put $5 into the highway, which is that, that's great. But we have the, we have more money coming into the debt service fund already than what we need to pay our bills off. And theoretically, within six or seven years, we could actually pay our debt off if we could pay all of the bonds off. I just want to make sure. I keep hearing over and over that the wheel tax is needed to help property tax. I want to ensure that that happens. That's what I want to, to get across to each one of us commissioners, because we're sitting here in front of the citizens of our county, and we need to be perfectly clear. Because if we don't, we're going to have a wheel tax, and then next year we would have another 5% or so property tax. Is that, am I looking at that right?
Not really, because it's up to this commission to make those decisions. And to make the right decisions, which we could have this year, and we could have pulled the 1.25 out in pennies, whatever that amounted to.
Hold it, hold it. Mr. Scarlett's speaking, and you can answer that. I'll talk.
There is, once Ms. Jessie gives that figure that says, okay, this is what is required to come in there, there is no need to add to that with more property tax. So the smart move becomes, for the citizens and the county, is to pull that out into 101 and pay for services. And that's, that's an easy deal. Ms. Jessie will go through her budget, and she will give us that number as we start down through budgeting.
Well, can, why can't we make that, why can't we make that decision tonight? We got 17 of us here. Why do we have to wait till next year, to the next fiscal year to do that?
Because there may be more available in there when she gets that number. There may be, let's say that there's seven pennies available in there. Are you saying you want to lock in to where you can't pull the other two pennies out?
No, because I think we could suspend the rules like we just did tonight, making a major decision for the county real quick that everybody seems to want to get over with pretty quick. And if we can do a wheel tax this quick without notice to the public, without putting it in the newspaper, I don't understand why we cannot amend this to say, whatever the wheel tax comes in at, we're going to adjust the property tax going in to the debt service fund for that figure. Why can't we do that?
I can say it is up to the commission on what this do. All I'm saying is, once you put this in, you need to be cautious about the thing before Ms. Jessie has the figures.
Here's, here's the problem. If I can interject right here, we went back and forth and over. The point of this is, if you determine exactly what you're going to do with that money, it takes options away from you during your budget. You need options to be able to move money to fit the budget for how the budget comes in. Because we don't know what this budget's going to come in like. Don't narrow yourself into a slot and say, hey, I can only be right here. It's not smart business to do that. You need to leave your options available. Therefore, you can apply the money where it's needed. Each year, the commissioners vote on where we're going to put the money. We're busting rocks here that we don't need to break. That's how it works.
I don't think I'm busting rocks. I think I'm asking a legitimate question, and I, I expect an answer. I, I do not understand why we have to jump through a hoop tonight and make a major decision like this without us seeing a written resolution like we normally do.
Okay, I'll answer your question why it has to be done tonight. If you do not do this tonight, and it does not pass by 14 votes, you've got to vote on it. If it passes tonight, you have to vote again in October. That's two consecutive voting meetings to pass a new tax. When you do that, you've got to have 14 votes for both meetings. So if you vote tonight to do this, you're setting the table for your next budget. Because if you wait till January or October to do this with 30 days lead time, you can't get it done for the next budget. You're not going to make your calendar year. I explained that to the budget committee last week. It's pure calendar. That's why I said if you don't do something now, you can't enact this to get it put into place. A wheel tax has to pass two consecutive, regularly scheduled meetings. If it don't, you're in the next year. It will not help your next year's budget cycle. Therefore, you have no money from anywhere else coming in. So therefore, it goes all to property tax. End of story. So are we ready to vote? Okay, Katie, you see, have you already spoken to this?
No, I spoke to the amendment, so I'm good, I'm good. Okay, well, Jimmy summarized what I was going to say. One, I think, I respect what you're asking for, but I think we're all fiscally conservative, and we're better off having options. I think we try really hard during budget cycle. Maybe you don't agree. But I think the majority up here are fiscally conservative, and we all try to keep the property taxes as low as possible. Anyway, side note, it's important because it's time-sensitive. Like Jimmy was saying, we have to pass it in two consecutive quarterly meetings, and then it takes the state for 90 days.
They, they request 90 days.
90 days to come back. So if we're, have any chance to use the wheel tax next year in the budget, it's time-sensitive, and that's why I'm willing to vote for it like it was presented to me. and that's why I'm willing to vote for it like it was presented tonight, and I hope other people support it too, or next year's budget's gonna be the same as this year's.
Ms. Katie, hold up, Rob Blevins, you're next.
It is time sensitive, that's why we have, uh, quarterly meetings and not monthly like we tried to. It's all about calendar, about how it's placed, and look at the school boards, next meetings, and then the junk, and junk so darn. We have plenty of options other than wheel tax, no one wants to do it, there are severance taxes, there's plenty of taxes we can tax, plenty. You need to hold the mayor accountable when people puts on boards, and us accountable, who would confirm? We're not worried a damn thing about zoning apparently, we're gonna make some money out of that.
Whoa, whoa, Mr. Blevins, there'll be no kind of language like that.
There was, I'm done.
Ms. Bales?
How quick?
Question has been called, we will proceed to vote.
I'm asked five times to speak.
I didn't see it on the board.
I, it's not on my computer, I can do it.
Okay.
I kept doing this, and you kept saying, hang on, hang on.
Hold up, Ms. Randy, and let her speak.
Quick, easy question, if we did not add the five dollars to do the roads, could the twenty-five dollars that we were already putting in there, had part of that not been used to do roads, if we were gonna do the debt and the capital and whatever else? But we added that, we added that one.
Based on the motion right now... It's gonna get some confusion here in a minute, nobody's gonna understand it.
It's later what you say, you add that twenty-five dollars, okay?
Yeah, I, I can slip that on big.
And you five dollars, you put that twenty-five dollars.
Okay, if you want to do that, that's not the... You're, you're asking to amend your motion, now see, we've done, we've done amended, the motion has done been amended, so it stands. We need to vote on the motion as it stands right now, and if it fails, then you can change it. Question has been called, we will proceed to vote.
Commissioner Parvatarian, do we need an official start date before we vote?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a start date?
June thirtieth.
No, 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 that is a end date.
That's the end date.
A lot of that, the start date, will be concerned with what Frank's schedule.
State need ninety days from...
If you started January first?
The renewal notices end.
You, you, you're not making the ninety days, 'cause if you do it October, you're November, December, January in front of it. So February or March would be your first possible to get Mr. Frank's schedule. What, what would, what would fit your schedule, Frank?
October meeting, anytime after February one. Uh, when we did this in twenty fifteen, I was, I was new, and it went in, uh, into effect a week after the second meeting, and no renewal notices were updated, no websites were updated, and it was a nightmare, and I would rather not have all my staff killed.
First week of February?
Wouldn't you pick March one?
I don't pick, it's, I, I don't vote, I don't pick.
March one?
Would March one be reasonable?
Mr. Ronnie, do you agree with March one? Mr. Coleman? We're good, March first, it'll be into the minutes. We shall proceed to vote.
Whoa, 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 we met number twenty-five or the thirty?
The thirty. The twenty-five has amended, so it's twenty-five plus the five. That, that is not correct, it fails from lack of...
Fourteen votes.
To that, we said it was not correct, so that goes back to twenty-five.
Yeah, you can make your, remake your motion, Mr....
I make a motion for twenty-five dollars, wheel tax, five dollars goes into the highway, and the other go into whatever they discussed earlier.
Start on March first, then point twenty-five, end on June thirty?
Yes. With sunshine day.
The June one thirty, yeah.
Sunset.
Twenty thirty.
Sunset day.
Okay, let us get it rubbed down.
Twenty-five dollars with five of that allotted to highway, capital.
So you're changing your numbers, correct, everything else stays the same?
Yes.
All right, got you.
Twenty to debt service, capital purchase, and infrastructure.
You just changed it from twenty-five to thirty to twenty to twenty-five, that's how you got that. Does everybody understand what just happened, which is change the numbers from twenty-five and thirty to twenty to twenty-five? Beginning date is still March first, ending date June thirtieth. Ms. Jan, did you second that? Mr. Scarlett?
Just so everybody understands, that lowers the amount, you can move. So everybody understands, you cannot take a million, just get them out of there and bring it over to one oh one. It will be a lower amount, 'cause you're only got twenty dollars left.
We shall proceed to vote. Ms. Katie?
I just wanna ask what the do, what the pennies are now, it's what, twenty-five percent less?
Twenty-five percent less, or twenty-six percent less.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent less than a million, so you're, you're probably around a million dollars.
Yeah, real close.
Honestly, you can't decide, 'cause you don't know how much they brought in.
That's all right, right?
Well, that's true.
It's kind of a bouncing number.
But it will be a lower amount, I just want everybody to understand that, you, you can't rely on the same thing.
Not seen a request to speak, we'll proceed to vote. Fourteen yes, three nos, passes.
Yes.
No outbursts, please. Is there a motion on the floor to... We have a motion on the floor to adjourn, we have air force.